So I want to welcome everybody to Sunday Night Seminar, Book of Revelation, and this is Week 11. And we're still in Chapter 2. So we just finished up Smyrna last week, and this week we will be diving into the Church of Pergamum. So before we begin, let's start with a word of prayer. Please pray with me. Father, we thank you once again for the time to come together to study your Word, this revelation that you have given, your apostle, 2,000 years ago, that we can read these words and still be moved by the power in which they hold. And Father, I pray tonight that your Spirit would guide us in this study, that you would be glorified during this time. Move us to repentance, to change, to live and follow more closely your Son, that you be glorified through our lives, and not just this time to study, but we would live these words out day in and day out. Father, I pray for your guidance throughout the study. Give us wisdom, give us just a heart that's open to the power of your Word. Let me pray these things in Jesus's name. Amen. All right, so Pergamum, little bit of background, got plenty of pictures up here. And mind you, I'm not offended if you do a Google search in the middle of as I'm talking and looking up your own pictures. That's just how we do things, right? So you know what, let's go ahead and we'll read this message to Pergamum first, and then we'll kind of go into the background. There you go. All right, starting, Chapter 2, Verse 12. "And to the angel of the church in Pergamum write: The one who has the sharp two-edged sword says this: 'I know where you dwell, where Satan's throne is, and you hold fast my name and did not deny my faith, even in the days of Antipas; my witness, my faithful one, who was killed among you, where Satan dwells. But I have a few things against you, because you have there some who hold the teaching of Balaam, who kept teaching Balak to put a stumbling block before the sons of Israel, to eat things sacrificed to idols, and to commit acts of immorality. So you also have some who, in the same way, hold the teaching of the Nicolaitans. Therefore repent, or else. I am coming to you quickly, and I will make war against them with the sword of my mouth. He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches; to him who overcomes, to him I will give some of the hidden manna, and I will give him a white stone and a new name written on the stone, which no one knows but he who receives it.'" Whew, boy. That doesn't get any less heavy the more you read it. So, okay, Pergamum. So the road north from Smyrna follows the coastline some 40 miles, and then turns inland in a northeasterly direction up the valley of Caicus River. About 10 miles inland from the GNC stands the impressive capital city of Pergamum. So that is number 3 up here. So here's the little inlet. And then I think in the next picture, it's a little bit more topographic. Yeah, there we go. Oh, I love this. So you can kind of see the sea here, this nice little valley, and surrounded by mountains. So remember that, right there. So Ephesus, Smyrna, Pergamum, and then the road's going to travel back south by Eterus, Sardis, Philadelphia, and Laodicea. In the loop here, they would start through here. And there were different passes through the mountains, but I could easily see 1, 2, and 3 being by sea, just kind of dotting around there. So, yep, good question, that I didn't repeat. So the question was the route. As we have it numbered here, 1, 2, 3, 4, so typically, would that have been the route for mail carriers coming in? Coming in from the west, yes. That would have been starting first in Ephesus, especially as a major port city, and then carrying that north. We could see that easily going by land, because there were passes through those mountains or the hill country, or then also just kind of dotting along the sea, and then following a certain trade route down from Pergamum all the way down to Laodicea. So, good question. All right, so Pliny called Pergamum "by far the most distinguished city in Asia", built on a cone-shaped hill 1,000 feet in height. It dominated the surrounding valley of the Caicus. Its very name in Greek, "Pergamon", means "citadel". Although the site appears to have been inhabited from prehistoric times, its rise to prominence came in the 3rd century B.C., when it became the capital of the Adelids. It was Alexander the Great who removed Pergamum from Persian control, completely changing the city's landscape into a series of terraces. When Alexander died, his general, Lysimachus, took control of the region as the king of Thrace. When Lysimachus died in 281 B.C., Pergamum and the surrounding area fell into the hands of the man he had in turn charged with protecting it, Philotaris. Philotaris ruled Pergamum as an independent ruler. Through a series of successions, Pergamum fell under the rule of Adalus I, and then his son, Eumeneus II. Both of these kings were part of the Hellenistic Adelid dynasty, and it was during this time that the majority of Pergamum's most celebrated buildings and monuments were constructed, especially under Eumeneus II, 197 to 159 B.C. Under Eumeneus II, Pergamum became the finest flower of Hellenic civilization. It boasted a library of more than 200,000 volumes. Legend has it that parchment was invented there when the supply of papyrus from Egypt was cut off in reprisal for Eumeneus's attempt to lure a famous librarian by the name of Aristophanes away from Alexandria. Ancient drama. Until Adalus III bequeathed his kingdom to Rome in 133 B.C., the Pergamian kings continued as enthusiastic patrons of Hellenistic culture. So Pergamum thrived, becoming the center of Pergamian kingdom, which greatly supported Rome and allied with them against the Macedonians in the 3rd and 2nd centuries A.D. In 129 B.C., Pergamum became part of the Roman Empire, bequeathed Rome, as I had said before, by Adalus III, who had no heir. This accounts for the presence of Roman artwork and temples. So Julius Caesar himself once visited the city, and it was here that Caesar imprisoned and executed the very pirates who had kidnapped him in 75 B.C., if you remember that story, after he hunted them down following his release. Later, Pergamum became part of the Byzantine Empire and remained an important city and metropolis throughout these periods. So the most spectacular aspect of this remarkable city was the upper terrace of the citadel with its sacred and royal buildings. So if you've got a... There we go. Okay, so what you see here is actually the Acropolis, the upper terrace that we're talking about. And so on this upper terrace, there's all these sacred and royal buildings. Of these, the most remarkable was the Great Altar of Zeus that jutted out near the top of the mountain. A famous frieze around the base of the altar depicts the gods of Greece in victorious combat against the giants of earth. Any scholar fans, or Heizer fans here, eyebrows went up, which scholars believe symbolizes the triumph of civilization over barbarism. But we know. It commemorates the victory of Adalus I, the first ruler in Asia to refuse tribute to the plundering Gauls over the Galatians. Everybody else realize that Galatia's in this area as well, right? So Paul's letter to the Galatians. So religion flourished in Pergamum. It was a center of worship for four of the most important pagan cults of the day: Zeus, Athena, Dionysus, and Asclepius. The shrine, actually, I'll talk about Zeus first. Zeus was the king of the gods and the god of the sky, weather, law and order, destiny and fate, and kingship. He was depicted as a regal, mature man with a sturdy figure and dark beard. His usual attributes were a lightning bolt, a royal scepter, and an eagle. His Roman name is Jupiter. Next, Athena. Athena was the Olympian goddess of wisdom and good counsel, of war, the defense of towns, heroic endeavor, and in her spare time, weaving, pottery, and various other crafts. She was depicted as a stately woman armed with a shield and spear and wearing a long robe, crested helm, and the famed Ijes, a snake-trimmed cape adorned with the monstrous visage of the Gorgon Medusa. Next, Dionysus. He was the Olympian god of wine, vegetation, pleasure, festivity, madness, and wild frenzy. He was depicted as either an older bearded god or an effeminate, long-haired youth. His attributes include the thyrsus, a pine-cone-tipped staff, a drinking cup, and a crown of ivy. He was usually accompanied by a troupe of satyrs and manades, or manades, wild female devotees. His Roman name is Liber, L-I-B-E-R, which liber liberty. So think of it in that context. And then finally, a more local and regional personage, Asclepius. He was the god of medicine. He was also the patron god, Pergamum, and reputed ancestor of the Asclepiades, the ancient guild of doctors. Asclepius was the son of Apollon and Trichian, Princess Coronus. His mother died in labor, and when she was laid out on the pyre, Apollon cut the unborn child from her womb. From this, Asclepius received his name, which means "to cut open". Asclepius was raised by the centaur Chiron, who instructed him in the art of medicine. He grew so skilled in the craft that he was able to restore the dead to life. This was a crime against the natural order, and so Zeus destroyed him with a thunderbolt. After his death, Asclepius was placed among the stars as the constellation Ophiakis, the serpent holder. Some say his mother was also set in the heavens as Corvus, the crow. Asclepius's apotheosis into godhood occurred at the same time. He was sometimes identified with Homer's Peion, the physician of the gods. So Asclepius was depicted as a kindly bearded man holding a serpent entwined staff. Although he is largely absent from ancient Greek vase painting, statues of the god are quite common. So don't confuse this one with the two snakes, because that's the god of commerce. Maybe the next time you see that, you'll think about that one. All right, so Pergamum today. Any questions on those Greek gods? Yeah?
Did each of these gods have their own temple?
Yes, did each of these gods have their own temple? I'm one for one now, or one for two. So yes, each of these gods would have had their own temple, their own altar. Yes, and just like each emperor as being worshiped would have his own temple as well. So, yep, great question. And the worship at those temples would have been slightly different as well. All right, any other questions? Yeah, Roy?
Do you know if the people selected one god to worship, or did they worship all the gods?
Yeah, so did ancient peoples select one god? Or did they worship any and all of them? Well, so generally, what would happen? What we know is that they would be devoted to one, right? But that wouldn't hinder them or prevent them from worshiping some of the other gods, maybe at certain times. So maybe if they were in need, maybe if they were devoted to Zeus, but then they were sick, and so they're not just offering to Zeus and praying to Zeus, but they're also praying to Asclepius for healing, right? And so, but then again, also, maybe at the same time, there's a, you know, army getting ready to attack Pergamum, and so all of a sudden, they're offering sacrifices. Everybody's offering sacrifices to Athena. But they end up defending the city successfully, and so now everybody's sacrificing to Dionysus. Got them all. There we go. So, you know, so there's nothing that really prevented them from that, but they would be identified as a certain devotee of one of those gods. So, and that would usually come in a bracelet or maybe even a certain color that they would wear, or, you know, different things. And they would have their own calendar and times of fasting or times of celebration and stuff. So, yep, let's see, what else? Oh, also interesting, Asclepius is also known as Savior. So just another little interesting tidbit there. Let's see. Yeah, so Athena, patron goddess, Greek equivalent to Roman or Truscan goddess Roma or Minerva. And Asclepius, yep, was designated soter, or Savior. So, all kinds of blasphemous stuff. So, all right, so Pergamum today. Today, the historic ruins of Pergamum are split into three main areas. In the Acropolis, one can find sites such as the library, gymnasium, very steep theater, and arsenal, as well as the Roman temple of Trajan. This was also once the site of the incredible altar of Pergamum or the altar of Zeus, the throne of Zeus, controversially held in the Pergamum Museum in Berlin, with only its base remaining at Pergamum. The other two areas of Pergamum are its lower city and stunning health center of Asclepius, where a variety of treatments were offered, such as rejuvenating mud baths, and so different things like that. Got their own health spa. Over a couple thousand years old. So, all right, yes. Yes, as well as the emperors. It was the context for them to be worshiping any or all of these gods, but as well as the emperors. It's a great question. So would the early Jews and Christians be worshiping these as well, as well as Yahweh and even Jesus alongside all of these? So as being a part of their culture? And the answer is no. They would not have grown up worshiping all of these other Greek and then Roman gods, or even the emperors, because that is actually what set them apart from that. Because they really, I mean, after a couple of generations of that, they would not be known as Christians, or even, I think Jewish, that's a little bit more difficult, because it's ethnically tied instead of just religiously, even 2,000 years ago. So as they are growing up, they're growing up in this polytheistic culture, where there is this pantheon of gods that are being worshiped, and, you know, they're not sending themselves up, you know, off to public school. They're educating their children themselves. So there is not this, like, quick assimilation with all of these other people. By and large, they would have stayed to themselves, done business with whoever, but they would have not have had anything to do with the pagan temples themselves. The Christians too. Now, like we talked about a few weeks ago, that'd be a lot more difficult, because you have a lot of Gentiles who were already investigating Judaism as God-fears. So attending synagogue, they probably just hadn't gone under the knife, and so here they are, hearing the Torah, you know, even readings from the entire Tanakh, and understanding the god of Israel, and so probably already separating themselves from pagan culture, which could have led to their own ostracization. You know, just they would have been excluded from society in general. And so, how much association did they, you know, did they move back and forth within that culture? We don't know, and I'm sure there's a full degree of how much they did. You know, because I don't think it's assumed that like they just cut it all, every single one of them, cut it off completely, and just went to the extreme and, you know, because now, like, they're getting removed, you know, pushed out of fellowship by the Jewish community, but then you have the Gentile community being like, "No, here you are renouncing all of our gods", and, you know, and most of them would have been friends and family. And so then, they're just kind of becoming their own group, which made them easier to persecute later on. So, yeah, great question. So of the 200,000 volumes that were at the library in Pergamum, do we have anything relevant to our Bible? You know what, I did not read anything on that, whether they had had a Tanakh or, you know, an Old Testament in their library or not. That's a really good question. I might have to go back and dig that one up, just to see like what writings were in there, if they were all, you know, secular, if they were all pagan, or, you know. So, no, that's a great question. Any other ones I don't know? I don't know who keeps a tally each night of how many questions Luke doesn't know, but these are really good.
That and how many times you know one of these questions.
That's another thing, that's right. Okay, so the letter itself. "In the letter to Pergamum, Christ commands their faithfulness to his name, even when Antipas was martyred, but rebukes them for allowing in their midst false teachers who had encouraged them to accommodate themselves to the prevailing culture. So this is going to be a regular issue. If they overcome, they will be invited to the messianic banquet; but if they fail to repent, Christ will come and fight against them." There's no neutral here. So, all right, Verse 12. "And to the angel of the church in Pergamum write: The one who has the sharp two-edged sword says this..." All right, so I'm going to pause right there. Of greatest import for the Christians living in Pergamum was the fact that it was the official center in Asia for the imperial cult. So now that we've established all the pagan background to it, now we're getting back into the imperial cult, which we have seen time and time again, really coming up throughout Chapter 1 and now into Chapter 2 as kind of like this, this underlying theme of like antagonism within this letter. And so it was the first city of Asia to receive permission to build a temple dedicated to the worship of a living ruler. In 29 B.C., Augustus granted permission for a temple to be erected in Pergamum to the divine Augustus and the goddess Roma, which was also Athena, the Greek Athena. Of all the seven cities, Pergamum was the one in which the church was most liable to clash with the imperial cult. So the stakes are high here. "To the church, Christ writes, as the one who has the sharp double-edged sword, in the context of life in a provincial capital, where the proconsul was granted the right of the sword, eus gladii, the power to execute at will. The sovereign Christ, with the two-edged sword, would remind the threatened congregation that ultimate power over life and death belongs to God." It just gets heavier, doesn't it? It's like, "Oh, you think they have the authority, like, to execute at will? Just a reminder, they're not God." Verse 13. "I know where you dwell, where Satan's throne is, and you hold fast my name and did not deny my faith, even in the days of Antipas; my witness, my faithful one, who was killed among you, where Satan dwells." So from Craig Keener in the IVP dictionary, "Pergamum was traditionally known for its worship of Asclepius, whose symbol on Pergamum's coins was serpent, and worshiped other traditional Greek deities." Actually, I already talked a little bit about that. But Demeter Athena Dionysus, its famous giant altar of Zeus, which was 120 by 112 feet, overlooked the city on its citadel, and some have suggested that this is the background for Satan's throne in this verse. David, if we could bring up the pictures of Satan's throne. So Keener believes that perhaps a more likely illusion for Satan's throne is the local worship of the emperor celebrated on Pergamum's coinage in this period. Local rulers have been worshiped before the Roman period, and Pergamum was one of the first cities of Asia to build a temple to a Roman emperor, as we talked about, to Augustus. A further imperial temple was dedicated there within a decade or two after John wrote Revelation. So this is the throne of Zeus or the altar of Zeus. And I wanted to include pictures of people in there, just so you can see how massive that is. They transported this from Pergamum to Berlin. So there's actually, in Berlin, in Germany, there is a museum dedicated to Pergamum. It was the least they could do. So this is a recreation of what it would have looked like in its entirety, with baths in there and the altar as well, all of the statues. These are the great gods, including Zeus, fighting the giants.
So what did you say they took to Berlin, which part of it?
Which part of it did they take to Berlin? All of it.
All of it, okay.
This is, everything you see here is in the museum in Berlin.
Is there a connection between Berlin and Pergamum?
Is there a... Why did they take it to Berlin? Because it was German archaeologists who were there.
So is that during Hitler's time or later?
I'm trying to think at what year that was. If somebody wants to Google that, you're welcome to. So I think I have one more picture. So this is what it would have looked like there in Pergamum. And so if you can remember the terrace, you know, the topography of it before, this is how that would have looked. So actually, it wouldn't have been the highest terrace, but this is all still considered the first tier or top tier. So it naturally looks like a throne, but if you also remember the, one of those pictures of each of the city locations, one that where you could really see the topography, the entire, like, everything around where the city is looks like a throne. It kind of mirrors this altar, this throne, in and of itself. It kind of mirrors this altar, this throne in and of itself. So I don't know, I think there, there's probably some wordplay going on there, some, some other level of symbolism. But like I said, not everybody is interpreting this throne of Satan as being the equivalent of the throne of Zeus, but they're also tying this into the imperial cult. "So all citizens were expected to participate in civic religion. Most citizens wanted to participate in imperial festivals and eat the meat of sacrificed animals doled out at many pagan festivals. Once one Christian was legally martyred, the legal precedent was set for the execution of Christians in other provinces." And this also kind of goes back to the letter to the Philippian church and their level of concern for Paul, because if that trial goes bad, they know that they're on the chopping block as well. Yes? 1876 is when German archaeologists brought the throne of Zeus back to, or to Berlin. So they started the museum to the Pergamum Museum in 1910, but there was a few things that happened during that time that prevented them from finishing it. So it finally opened up in 1930. So thank you for looking that up. That's good. Alright, Mount, in his commentary, "The letter to Pergamum begins with an acknowledgement of the difficulty of living in an environment so distinctly pagan and a commendation for the church's faithful witness in the face of severe opposition. The risen Christ knows where they live." And this is Catoikos, suggests permanent residence. "It is where Satan sits enthroned," so literal translation. "Many suggestions have been put forward to explain the phrase where Satan has his throne. Frequent mention is made of the great throne-like altar to Zeus that overlooked the city from the citadel. Others take the phrase to refer to the cult of Asclepius, who was designated savior and whose symbol was the serpent." This would obviously remind Christians of Satan. So taking the word Satan, immediately drawing that connection to the serpent. So that's why I kind of given you the background to Asclepius. And so, so we have multiple suspects here. Right? So we have the imperial cult, we have Zeus and his physical throne, but we also have the worship to Asclepius. The serpent, represented by the serpent. So a scholar named Wood notes that "As the traveler approached Pergamum by the ancient road from the south, the actual shape of the city hill would appear as a giant throne towering over the plain." So I was just talking about. "The expression is best understood, however, in connection with the prominence of Pergamum as the official cult center of emperor worship in Asia." So even Mount is coming, coming down on the side of emperor worship, the imperial cult. "In addition to the erection of a temple to Augustus in 29 B.C., a second temple was built in the time of Trajan, when the city acquired the title twice, Neo Coros, Temple Warden. It was here that Satan had established his official seat or chair of state, as Rome had become the center of Satan's activity in the West. So Pergamum had become his throne in the East. In these adverse conditions, the church at Pergamum had remained true to the name of Christ. They had not denied their faith by yielding to the pressure of burning incense to the emperor and declaring Caesar is Lord." And so remember, we talked about this a few weeks ago, where there would have been an altar just like this with a bowl of incense with hot, or I'm sorry, there'd been a bowl of incense here, a bowl of hot coals here, and you would just take a pinch and you would drop it onto the fire, onto the hot coals and just simply say Caesar is Lord. Do that once a year and you don't have to worry about persecution the other 329 days. Would have been three, I'm sorry, 359 days. It was 360 day calendar. So I messed up a nerd joke. Ah, man. And so and so, so, but that was it. That was it. Dropping that little bit of smelly stuff, this powder, onto these burning coals and that was it. Your name was taken down. Oh, good Roman or a good citizen of Pergamum. And you didn't have to worry about being imprisoned or killed for just following Jesus. That was it. How tempting would that be, especially if you've seen other people suffer? Like we can read this and just kind of shrug it off, but no, like this is, it is like the most simple and, and really in all appearances insignificant act. And you're really just saying three words and that's it. And you were completely off the hook. How tempting would that be? Be honest. Like even just looking at your kids, the rest of your family, you probably left your business that you would work so hard to come and do your civic duty to do that. But here, but here is where Christ is saying, "Don't deny me." It's not gonna, it's not gonna end well. He is the one with the sharp two-edged sword. "So not even in the days of Antipas, who was put to death in their city, did they renounce their faith. Little is known of this early martyr," so we're talking about Antipas here, "apart from this reference in Revelation." So we actually don't have any other records about Antipas. "The name is found in a third-century inscription of Pergamum, and he is mentioned by Tertullian. The legend appears in later Hegiographers, Simon Metaphrostes, and Belandus." I just need to say these names with confidence, right? That he was, that Antipas was slowly roasted to death in a brazen bowl during the reign of Domitian. So Domitian, that would have been one of the emperors, you know, in the theories of like when this was actually written, it would have been during the time of Domitian. So his name, abridged from Antipater, has mistakenly been taken to mean against all. And the idea that he gained the name by his heroic stand against the forces of evil is unfounded. What is noteworthy is that he is given the Lord's own title from Revelation, chapter one, verse five of the faithful witness. So here we are seeing references from chapter one coming into the play into these letters. Later martyrs in Pergamum are identified as Carpus, Papalus, and Agathenike. "The verse concludes with a repeated emphasis on Pergamum as the place where Satan lives. A contrast is intended with the first clause, where you live. Both the believers and their ultimate adversary, their accuser, live in the same place. Little wonder that martyrdom begins in Pergamum." Any questions on that? Now, before you ask any questions about Satan, I was thinking about this and I think what I'll do next week, because as we've mentioned here and Satan will also come up again, I will probably kind of unpack a little bit more the figure of Satan at the beginning of next week. So there you go. You can just hold all the questions about Satan until then. Or email me during the week. Be like, Luke, make sure you include this. Totally good with that. So. Any questions? So why did they take the altar back to Berlin? Funny thing, that was just kind of a trend in the 1800s and 1900s. Find something cool somewhere else, take it home. I'll just leave it at that. What was Pergamum's response to the throne of Zeus being taken, or the altar of Zeus being taken to Berlin? I don't think they had anything to say about that. So just for Germany's position in the world at that time, as well as being the Ottoman Empire, there were some friendly relations, relationship there and so, yeah. So, so the question, so the question is, can you just burn incense and declare Caesar is Lord and then repent after? That's boiling down your question, right? I don't think it works that way. And even just to like approach it, approach it with such a like a flip it manner, you know, like that it gives pause, right? I'm not saying that you are. I'm just saying that like if somebody else would be like, I've got a plan for this. I will repent after I do it. Like, you know, and that's, that's right. And, and so you know, and that really does like get to the heart of who we are as Christians. Like, and I think that's, a lot of times for our own sake or wants and desires, we want to err on the side of grace. We really, especially in the last 50, 75 years, we have shirked any, and like anything that reeks of legalism or high expectations on us as followers of Jesus Christ. And because whether that is a response to puritanical, like, you know, Christianity, that really was kind of at the bedrock of the American experiment here. And then all of a sudden it's swinging all the way over here to kind of like that easy believe-ism and very free grace. Here we are reading this 2,000-year-old, you know, piece of God's word and being challenged by it and having a completely different mindset where I would say that that whole idea of, I'm just gonna do it and repent after, was like anathema, that was blasphemous. Like that was unheard of. I mean, not unheard of. Trust me, I'm sure plenty of people thought about and been like, no, that's not right. That's not how things are done, because that would have been seen as forsaking Christ. Yeah, God knows my heart. That, yeah, we could probably insert all kinds of phrases to just be like, get ourselves off the hook, but remember, it's not us that put, you know, that, that gets ourself off the hook. Like, that's the thing is that we are absolutely held accountable even being in Christ for everything that we say and everything that we do in this life. And, and I think this even gives us like a deeper meaning, whereas instead of declaring Caesar is Lord, what does it mean for us to declare that Jesus is Lord? I mean, a lot of times, you know, we think Jesus Christ and Christ is not his last name. Or the Lord Jesus, you know, Lord, you know, it's not a replacement for mister. Or, you know, anything like that. Like we are talking about the kingship, the Messiah-ship of Jesus. That is huge. That is what we're declaring every time we use one of those words with Jesus. And we're declaring our allegiance to him as our king. Above and beyond any president, any ruler that we would have, any other attachment that we have in our lives, he is superior. That's what we mean. We should, should mean. And that's what, I think when we read scripture, that's what he demands. It's not Jesus and. Right? I know a lot of times we, we try to remind people that, you know, it's not Jesus and like our works or whatever else. Well, let's like turn that around. It's not Jesus in anything else. Like he is, he is our Lord and our Savior. So, okay, off my soapbox. Question?
Just was gonna add one thing too. Jesus says that those that deny me before men, I will deny before my Father. So it's clearly stated.
Yep. And we were talking about that last week with Smyrna too, because yeah, just that whole idea of denying Christ. If he, you know, if we deny him, he's gonna deny us to the Father. Absolutely. Yeah. So, so how does that apply to Joseph and Daniel? And, and I think with Daniel and especially with his three friends, we have an even greater example of this where even in their proximity, even in their level of influence within a pagan society, God had put them in such a position and yet they were not willing to compromise their devotion to God, to Yahweh. And so they still weren't going to bow down and worship to anything. And so I think like, see, and it's that level of like, as we're reading this, we're understanding this, maybe seeing it through the lens of an imperial cult, right? I mean, Revelation is kind of an anti-imperial cult letter that really like we think of these people of Daniel, Azariah, Hananiah, and Meshiel, or you might know them as Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego. But like as we are talking about them, we're rereading this and being like, oh, well, I can actually serve in government too, but here's the line. "The moment I'm expected to worship, anything other than Yahweh himself, that's it. That's it. I'll sacrifice my job. I'll sacrifice my life before that ever happens, that compromise." So, and I think with Joseph too, we don't have a lot of those reports of him taking a stand against, you know, if he was called to compromise that. Now, there was more personal integrity things that come up for Joseph, but his still, you know, that's not a far-off connection. Because then we start seeing like, oh, well, you know what? I'm gonna take this big stand in my devotion to the Lord and I'm not gonna compromise that, but then we compromise in our personal integrity. We need to pull all these things together. They're in the same pot. So, question over here. Hebrews 10:26. "For if we go on sinning willfully after receiving the knowledge of the truth, there no longer remains a sacrifice for sins." Well, let's just read 27 too. "But a terrifying expectation of judgment and the fury of a fire, which will consume the adversaries." So, yeah, I mean, I think that does, because what we have is a complete denial of the lordship of Christ. It's being replaced with Caesar as Lord. So, and this, and mind you, like we have this example, not just in the New Testament, but also in the early church. So this isn't something that like somebody's just making up or trying to like come down hard in, in some way on this. We have this from church history. This is a, an example that we have, a precedent that's been set for us even within this context. Getting into the mark of the beast, right. And, and we'll talk about that. Might be a few weeks, might be a few months, I don't know, but at some point we'll talk about that. But that is where like, that'll also translate too. Absolutely. Because, and as we'll get to that, little teaser, like Because, and as we'll get to that, little teaser, like, that's about allegiance and loyalty as well. So, yep, absolutely. All right, and yes?
You, was your name right away on the last one?
Yeah, so they would have had a knowledge of who was living where in that time. And there also would have been like a, a mark given, whether it be like a red ribbon or something like that, to say that you had offered, you had burned incense to, and declared Caesar's lordship. Did I not repeat that question? Because I'm definitely not going to repeat the last comment. Was there a, was there a way of knowing who had? Oh, it's time for a break! No, no, so, so the question was, was there a list of like citizens that would be marked, you know, good or bad, naughty or nice? Or anything like that? Was there? And yes, there, there, they kept track, they did have census records. There would have been a family representative, something like that. And so, whether there would have been, you know, a ribbon or even a mark on the hand that they had, maybe on their right hand, that would have showed their allegiance. And, so, yes. All right. So, looking at verses fourteen and fifteen, and we're going to get into some fun Old Testament stuff here. Verse fourteen and fifteen, so we're going to look at the weaknesses, according to Jesus. But I have a few things against you, because you have there some who hold the teaching of Balaam, who kept teaching Balak to put a stumbling block before the sons of Israel, to eat things sacrificed to idols and to commit acts of immorality. So this is interesting, because we had talked last week about eating food sacrificed to idols. Now, we have a, a mention here of Balaam. So although the church at Pergamum had remained faithful in the midst of severe opposition, even when Antipas was martyred, they were guilty of allowing within their number some who held the teaching of Balaam. Now, let's go ahead and go back to Numbers chapter twenty-two. Numbers chapter twenty-two. And we'll find the beginning of this story. So the context here, Israel has come out of Egypt, and they had been in the wilderness. And they were coming into Moabite territory, the plains of Moab, beyond the Jordan. And this is opposite of Jericho, so this is modern day Jordan. So Balak, the son of Zippor, saw all that Israel had done to the Amorites, they had just wiped them out. So Moab was in great fear because of the people, for they were numerous, and Moab was in dread for the son, of the sons of Israel. Moab said to the elders of Midian, now this horde will lick up all that is around us, as the ox licks up the grass of the field. And Balak, the son of Zippor, was king of Moab at that time. So he sent messengers to Balaam, the son of Beor, at Pethor, which is near the river. So that's a river Euphrates. In the land of the sons of his people, to call him, saying, behold, a people came out of Egypt. Behold, the cover, they cover the surface of the land, and they are living opposite me. Now therefore, please come curse this people for me, since they are too mighty for me. Perhaps I may be able to defeat them and drive them out of the land, for I know that he whom you bless is blessed, and he whom you curse is cursed. So the elders of Moab and the elders of Midian departed with the fees for divination in their hand, and they came to Balaam and repeated Balak's words to him. Now, what happens over the course of this chapter is they ask him, but he says, no, he can't go. The Lord will not let him go. And so this happens three times. And then finally, he is given permission by God to go with them. So verse twenty-one, so Balaam arose in the morning and saddled his donkey and went with the leaders of Moab. Verse twenty-two. But God was angry because he was going, and the angel of Yahweh took his stand in the way as an adversary against him. Now he was riding on his donkey, and his two servants were with him. So basically, we have now three times where Balaam almost dies. And at final, finally, it is revealed. Verse thirty-five, but the angel of Yahweh said to Balaam, go with the men, but you shall speak only the word which I tell you. So Balaam went along with the leaders of Balak. So Balaam actually shows up finally, after being warned by God and the angel of Yahweh. And when he goes to curse Israel, he doesn't curse them at all, he actually blesses them. Needless to say, Balak is not happy about this, at all, right? But finally, what we find out at a later time, we have the sin of Peor. And so while Israel remained as she team, the people began to play the harlot with the daughters of Moab. For they invited the people to the sacrifices of their gods. This is chapter twenty-five of the book of Numbers. For they invited the people to the sacrifices of their gods, and the people ate and bowed down to their gods. So Israel joined themselves to Baal of Peor. And Yahweh was angry against Israel. Yahweh said to Moses, take all the leaders of the people and execute them in broad daylight before Yahweh, so that the fierce anger of Yahweh may turn away from Israel. So Moses said to the judges of Israel, each of you slay his men who have joined themselves to Baal of Peor. Then behold, one of the sons of Israel came and brought to his relatives a Midianite woman in the sight of Moses and in the sight of all the congregation of the sons of Israel, while they were weeping at the doorway of the tent of meeting. When Phinehas, the son of Elizor, the son of Aaron, the priest, saw it, he arose in the midst of the congregation and took a spear in his hand, and he went after the man of Israel into the tent and pierced both of them, through the man of Israel and the woman, through the body. So the plague on the sons of Israel was checked. Those who died by the plague were twenty-four thousand. So, what we have is, Balaam wasn't able to curse Israel. But, before leaving, and probably just so he could still take the fees for divination with him, he told Balak, listen, I don't need, one, I can't curse them, because Yahweh won't let me. But let me tell you this. If you cause them to sin against their God, they will be cursed. Because He will bring judgment on them. That is the sin of Balaam. That is what brings Balaam to his end. Now, so Balaam's name and story became famous, and he's referred to several times in the New Testament even. Peter compares false teachers to Balaam. Second Peter, chapter two, verse fifteen. Go to the other end of your Bible. Second Peter, chapter two, verse fifteen. Actually, let me start at verse. Well, it kind of goes on a rampage here. So let's, I'll just pick up at fourteen. Having eyes full of adultery that never ceased from sin, enticing unstable souls, having a heart trained in greed accursed children, forsaking the right way, they have gone astray, having followed the way of Balaam, the son of Beor, who loved the wages of unrighteousness. But he received a rebuke for his own transgression, for a mute donkey speaking with the voice of a man restrained the madness of the prophet. So he's talking about false prophets there. And then Jude. Flip over just a couple pages. Jude, verse eleven. Woe to them. Once again, talking about false teachers. For they have gone the way of Cain, and for pay, they have rushed headlong into the error of Balaam and perished in the rebellion of Quora. So, verse eleven. It was verse eleven. So associating Balaam with the selling of, basically, one soul for a financial gain. So although, uh, let's see. So although the church at Pergamum had remained faithful in the midst of persecution, they were still guilty for having some who hold to the teaching of Balaam. So it's clear from the context, this refers not to a body of doctrine, but to Balaam's activity in advising the Midianite women how to beguile the Israelites into acting treacherously against the Lord. So Numbers chapter twenty-five, verse one, reports that the Israelite men began to indulge in sexual immorality with the Moabite women, who in turn were successful in getting them to worship their gods and take part in their sacred meals. Although there's no mention of Balaam at this point, we learned in Numbers thirty-one, verse sixteen, of his role in Israel's apostasy, the Midianite women followed Balaam's advice. So that's where we bring all of this together. And even, before we go any further, as we talked about before, with kind of this pagan context, this background, that all of these Christians were living in, how easy would it be to be enticed by the level of sexual immorality that was present and socially, culturally acceptable? Talked about that a few weeks ago. At all of those pagan temples, temple prostitution, and that was a donation. That was being a good citizen, because you're contributing to the temple welfare. And so you had these Christians being enticed by that. But then what happens? Why is that being done? That's being done in worship to those gods. So that sexual immorality is leading them to worshiping other gods. So thus Balaam became a prototype of all corrupt teachers who betrayed believers into fatal compromise with worldly ideologies. So at Pergamum, where Satan sat and throned, some within the church had decided that accommodation was the wisest policy. They taught the way of compromise. Scholar Caird explains the action of this group by saying that the sum total of the Nicolaitans' offense, then, is that they took a laxer attitude than John to pagan society and religion. Conjectures that there, they may have been a group who honestly believed that it was possible, without disloyalty, to maintain a peaceful coexistence with Rome. The very plausibility of the case explains the violent and abusive language John uses to refute it. While not denying that the compromisers were able to rationalize their, their position, perhaps the long, the lines that Caird suggests, what I just read, it is doubtful that the risen Christ, not John, would need to resort to violent and abusive language to refute heresy. So hence the very strong language that we have encompassed in this letter. Because after we read this section, there, we're going to get to the warnings. And it's scary. Right? I mean, we already read through it before, but we're going to unpack this. And wow, I mean, Jesus isn't talking like this to each of the churches. So why is He approaching this one like this? And so it just shows how sinister, how corrupt this belief is. This level of compromise. Compromise with the pagan temples, compromise within the imperial cult, and even declaring Caesar as Lord. Because then that opens the door to all of these other things. A total denial of Christ. So food sacrificed to idols here, probably refers to the meat that was eaten at pagan feast. Could also be what was sold in the open market. So the sexual immorality could also be understood, like what I talked about, pagan temples or festivities. Some writers take both expressions metaphorically, as referring to idolatrous practice in general and religious infidelity. So I just want to present all sides. I think what is being presented is pretty contextual to that time. And doesn't need to be taken metaphorical. Does this apply to now? Yes, it does. Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a lens through which we see things. It might not be so overt as two thousand years ago. Now, if we were in another country, maybe if we were in India, maybe if we were in, you know, another country that had, you know, its own official deities, that would be, that would be something. That would be very similar to this. And what was expected in allegiance, you know, expressing your allegiance to the state. You know, but for where we are here, I'm not going to make a formal stance on what that is. Or isn't. You know, I, but I think that's definitely something, as we're reading through this, it's something to pray through. What does that look like? What does that look like here? And, you know, and this is for every letter, right? We talked about this before, where, you know, we don't have to run this through a lens, where each of these, as we talked, you know, we were talking earlier today, where these are like different periods for the church over the last two thousand years. Even if it was, like, what would that look like in this country, as opposed to maybe Europe or someplace else? Right? So we run into different things. I think as we read through these letters, we can read them devotionally as like, okay, if this letter was written to the church of Columbus, or the community church of Columbus, would that apply? What would that look like for us, right? Or even understanding in its own context, how does that translate for us today? So we can actually glean something from each of these. What are the good things that they're doing, that Jesus is celebrating and, and saying, hey, great job? And what are the things that He's warning about? Stop it. You need to repent of this right now. Well, if we can go through that list, and what does that look like today? Oh, oh man, that applies. We need to stop doing that. And then even some of these warnings. Just like we were reading with Smyrna last week about persecution. And what is the, and even this week, what does that look like for us? Can we in our hearts be so determined and allegiance to Jesus Christ? As our Lord, as our Savior? That like, we're already emotionally and mentally and spiritually preparing ourselves for that day. But we're waking up and living it out every single day. And we're doing that in repenting of sin and choosing Jesus's lordship over our current desires and wants. Because that's how it happens, right? It's not just this big to-do at the end. Oh, this is it, here we go. It's every single day. It's when we wake up, it's in every conversation, it's in every action. It's listening to the Holy Spirit within, within us. Nobody shows up for the big game without practicing or without ever picking up a ball, right? And says, you know what? I'm going to do awesome. But they're practicing day in and day out. They're staying there, and they are, you know, doing everything they can to get better. And it's leading up to that big game, right? So, all right, any questions? After my little soapbox. Off the soapbox, okay. I don't know what questions you would have after that, but you know. Luke, when's that coming? I don't know.
So one question.
Yes? Yeah. Good, good question. So, so that's kind of zooming out a little bit. So we already have a few churches that are mentioned as having the Nicolaitans, and even more pronounced, the imperial cult, right? And so why is that? Because here we've started with Ephesus, Smyrna, and Pergamum over here on the coast. Is, is there a reason for that? And, and if you look at the back end, And if you look at the back end, even after Thyatira, we're not going to have those issues. Why is that? And really, we just have these cities. And like historically, this is what they're known for. Like they're known for their Imperial Cult. They're known for, you know, having multiple temples to very like, these are, these are the big gods, right? When we're talking about Zeus and Athena, Dionysus, these are the popular ones that people, you know. And they would be expected in such a premier city like Pergamum, and even secondarily to Smyrna, in a large trading city like Ephesus. So I don't, it's not like a coincidence per se. It's just, it's just contextual. And we'll, and we'll get to that too. Even for each of the other cities, there is like a deeper level of contextual evidence that we'll see. They have their own issues. It just doesn't necessarily involve these. So, yep. And I mean, you know, this is the Roman time period. And so would that have been, is that coincidental that here on this west coast, we have these, this Roman influence and this imperial expectation too? So I think some of that lends itself to it, you know, geographically. But beyond that, I haven't read anything really definitive. That's a great question, good stuff. And for the record, I incorporated the question in the answer. That one, that one counts, that one counts. Well, yeah. And so even regionally for us, from city to city, there's different issues, you know, within, with churches. And we could even, I mean, it's a little bit different here, but like denominationally. I'll leave it at that. I don't need to unpack that anymore. But you know, and I think it's something that if each of us were reading through this, it's a good gut check of how are we living out our faith? What are the things that like we have compromised on? And have we left our first love? You know, I mean, you could just kind of do a mashup of all seven of these letters. And really, I mean, man, there should be a devotion written on that. Hmm, that's an idea. So, so, yeah, no, it's, it's a good point. Any other questions? Okay. So reading on here, verse 15, and we were kind of already alluding to this. "So you also have some who in the same way hold the teaching of the Nicolaitans." So last week, we had talked about the Nicolaitans. So the construction of verse 15 is not altogether clear. Likewise refers to the preceding verse and indicates a comparison between the situation at Pergamum and that of Israel being led astray by the cunning of Balaam. So "you" also emphasizes this comparison. If the first four words are to be taken as unit, it follows that the Nicolaitans are essentially the same groups, the same group as the Balaamites. Both describe an antinomian, and that means anti-law group, that had accommodated itself to the religious and social requirements of the pagan society in which they lived. So these are the ones that were really preaching the liberty, the freedom that they have in Christ, even the freedom to sin. So that was what the Nicolaitans were known for. And just to kind of add another layer, we're throwing in Balaam. So we have teachers who are probably teaching this, who are encouraging this understanding. And then you have a whole bunch of people who are like, hey, that sounds great. I'm in. And so then you have this compounded problem of really what sounds like an amazing doctrine. We have freedom in Christ, amen? It's not freedom to sin. And that's the problem, is that they were taking that as a license to do whatever they want, to compromise with society around them. And even more so, probably to the next degree, is kind of an antinomian personality, or antinomian idea, ideology, where they are against any of those requirements. So anti-law, anti Torah, they are against any of those commands that God had already given his people. And so they're like, nah, you know what? That all got done away with. Jesus died, so we didn't have to obey that. Which sounds good. But the problem is, what do you have left? It's left to doing whatever you want. God gave those commands as a blessing to Israel to identify with him, the law giver. And when we're talking about this, we're including the Ten Commandments here, right? Nothing wrong with the Ten Commandments. There's nothing wrong with any of God's law. What becomes wrong is all the traditions and all these other expectations around God's law that are not God's law, that's not God's word, but it's the teachings and traditions of men. That is what was wrong in Jesus's time as he was cutting through the traditions, separating what God's word actually says and what had built up over 1,500 years that was a burden that nobody could bear. Not even the professionals, the Pharisees. So we have that whole idea on one end. But then on the other is everybody that just wanted to just throw all that out the window and then just say, hey, we can do whatever we want. The Nicolaitans and the Balaamites. Now, I'll leave that to you, for how does that apply to your life? And that's something that we need to pray about. And this is, like, we have the living God, his spirit dwelling within us. And so even with technological advances and all of these other things, I think we need to be in prayer and looking at what is it? What are we called to do? What are the things that we, that is okay and of God? And what are the things that are not? And it's not just technology, it's with any number of things. Where is that level of compromise? Where's compromise in our lives? Any questions? All right. So the solution, verse 16. So here Jesus is on a roll. He's talked about Satan's throne, the teaching of Balaam, the Nicolaitans. Verse 16, "Therefore repent, or else I am coming to you quickly, and I will make war against them with the sword of my mouth." Okay, so, "The indifference of the church at Pergamum to the presence of the Nicolaitans is a matter of considerable concern. John is uncompromising in his position. Unless the church repents, Christ will come and fight against them with the sword of his mouth. Only a portion of the church has fallen prey to the pernicious doctrine of the Balaamites, but all are guilty of not taking action against their presence. The fault of Pergamum is the opposite of Ephesus, where the heretics were rooted out, but love was missing." That's chapter 2, verses 2 and 4. "The coming of Christ should be understood as a coming in judgment. From the perspective of the first century, it could also be the second or final coming of Christ." And I think we've talked about that before, that the entire New Testament is written with the understanding that Jesus is coming back, like, not just soon, as in possibly in 2,000 years, but within the next few days. Like they're waking up surprised that they're not already in the new heaven, new earth. That is the mindset of the New Testament writers. As they're, I mean, that's why they weren't writing these things, like compiling these things within a couple of years of Jesus's ascension. They were living it out. They were just going out, making disciples, because Jesus was coming back any day now. And so then, by the time some of them start dying of persecution, martyrdom, by the time some of them are getting martyred, they're like, hey, um, we better write some of this stuff down. We better make a bunch of copies and pass this around to everybody we know. Because, you know, and imagine what Matthew's thinking. If I die, man, I have all these notes here of Jesus's teachings. I better pull these together for my disciples, which is what he does around 50 AD. According to early church history sources, that's exactly because there was this, after James the Just is martyred, he's thrown off the temple. There's this wave of persecution. And Matthew is one of those, is compiling all of his notes for his disciples before he leaves Jerusalem to go to Damascus. And so that, I mean, it's 25, it's 20 years later that they're just finally thinking, oh, oh man, we need to finalize this because, because, because I'm a marked man. And so that's when we see a lot of these writings happening. I mean, Peter, according to church tradition, is dictating the Gospel of Mark while he's imprisoned in Rome. So there's a number of these things that are happening, and it's almost after the fact, because every day after what we read in Acts 1, that they're thinking, Jesus is coming back today. This is it, guys. This is the day the Lord has made. Let's rejoice and be glad in it, because he's coming tonight, you know, or something like that. And so, but when he's not, they're just like, oh, okay, another day to make disciples, let's go. He might be coming this weekend. 20 years later, they're still getting up and they're just being like, you know what? I wonder if Thomas made it to India. Like, I got a day, another day to make disciples, let's do this. And so, you know, it's just one of those things, that was their mentality. And so here, we have really, at the close of the New Testament and the close of the first century, John is receiving this vision. And here we have this idea of, wow, okay, when is Jesus's return? But even in this letter to Pergamum, there's this idea of like, hey, I'm going to fight against those who are preaching this heresy in this church. And so then the question is, okay, is this like a spiritual battle that's going to happen? Like, are they all going to die of a disease, a plague? You know, like what happened before in the Book of Numbers? Or is this the second coming? And all of a sudden, they're on the wrong side? The separation of the sheep and goats, Matthew 25, right? And so both of those, I think, are in view here, where there is maybe something of an immediate judgment. They're going to reap what they sow. Or at the judgment, when Jesus returns. There might be a surprise for them. Here they are preaching what they think is the gospel of freedom in Christ. They probably are propping themselves up and saying, yep, we have squashed all the legalism, or I've been arguing with the legalists all the time. I'm preaching the true gospel of this freedom in Christ, me and my Nicolaitan buddies. Only to find out that they're wrong. Maybe to receive a letter from John after a revelation, as he was in exile. Surprise, you're on the wrong side, preaching the wrong message. And so they have the opportunity to repent. "Therefore repent, or else I am coming to you quickly, and I will make war against them with the sword of my mouth." And so this repents not just for the Nicolaitans, but for everybody at Pergamum, because they are there to hold those accountable, right? So there wasn't just a, whoa, you know, everybody's reading this. I mean, imagine, okay? All right, imagine if you will. They're all in house church together, okay? You know, maybe you've got six or seven families, or like, maybe, just maybe, they found a common space. Maybe they left the city and like, hey, let's all go for a picnic. And so all of a sudden, you've got like 100 people out hanging out together in the field. And they're like, we just got a letter from John. Ooh, okay, read it. And so they're reading it out. And all of a sudden, everybody's like side eyeing everybody else. Because they know who's teaching what. That's uncomfortable. Because you get to this part, it's not just about them. It's about everybody that has tolerated their teaching, who has not put them out of the fellowship. Who has not said, hey, what you're teaching is wrong and is not the gospel of Jesus Christ. So that's a challenge. That's a challenge for each, I mean, man, I think that preaches to all of us, right? So, all right, verse 17. Yes, one question. I guess that's the grace of, grace of the Lord, right? "Repent, or else I am coming to you quickly, and I will make war against them with the sword of my mouth." Yeah, no. It's going to be ugly either way. You just don't want to even be a part of it. Don't even want to be near that. So, any other questions? All right, verse 17. Just moving right along here. "He who has an ear, let him hear what the Spirit says to the churches; to him who overcomes, to him I will give some of the hidden manna, and I will give him a white stone and a new name written on the stone, which no one knows but he who receives it." All right. So to the faithful at Pergamum, the risen Lord promises some hidden manna and a white stone inscribed with a new name known only to the recipient. Manna was the food supernaturally supplied to the Israelites during their sojourn from Egypt to Canaan. The idea of hidden manna reflects a Jewish tradition that the pot of manna that was placed in the ark for a memorial to future generations was taken by Jeremiah at the time of the destruction of Solomon's temple and hidden underground in Mount Nebo. Does anybody remember why Mount Nebo is significant? It's where Moses died, after looking, after, I knew what you meant. That's where Moses looked out over the promised land, because he was actually not allowed to cross the Jordan. And so that is where he dies, and the Lord buries him. And there's something about a scuffle with Satan over the body, right? Anybody know what I'm talking about? Book of Jude. So that's right. Now, let's go ahead and read Exodus, chapter 16. Not the whole chapter. You just never know, I have to say that, right? Like, not the whole chapter. Oh, okay, Luke, because sometimes we do. So, all right, Exodus, chapter 16, verses 32 through 34. "Then Moses said, 'This is what Yahweh has commanded: let an omer full of it, the manna, be kept throughout your generations, that they may see the bread that I fed you in the wilderness, when I brought you out of the land of Egypt.' Moses said to Aaron, 'Take a jar and put an omer full of manna in it, and place it before Yahweh to be kept throughout your generations.'" As Yahweh commanded Moses, so Aaron placed it before the testimony to be kept. So, it didn't spoil, it didn't go rotten or anything like that. It didn't mold. There was a jar of manna. There was a jar of manna that was there kept with the ark of the covenant from generation to generation that people could actually open and see, see the actual manna. Also Hebrews, chapter nine. Just a reference. Hebrews, chapter nine, verse three and four. Behind the second veil, there was a tabernacle, which is called the Holy of Holies, having a golden altar of incense and the ark of the covenant covered on all sides with gold, in which was a golden jar, holding the manna and Aaron's rod, which budded in the tables of the covenant. Also, as far as Jeremiah, taking that jar of manna, the hidden manna and hiding it on Mount Nebo. You can read that in 2nd Maccabees. Chapter two, verses four through seven. I know, not usually not a part of our Protestant bibles. But it's still a reference that was still literature that was influential at the time, in the first century. And so this could easily be something that Jesus is speaking to that all of those listening would have been familiar with.
So that was because it was, was taken?
Well, when was it taken? And so according to tradition, Jeremiah, the prophet Jeremiah, one who has a book by his name, also writer of Lamentations, before the temple's destruction, before Babylon comes in and wrecks everything, he takes the manna and hides it. Some people, you know, thought that it might've been under, you know, the current dome of the rock and where, you know, the, the stonework is where the, or the bedrock, where the altar was and everything else. But no, according to 2nd Maccabees, the tradition is that it was taken over across the Jordan, modern day country of Jordan, onto Mount Nebo and hidden. So.
So, so then if we were to find it, then?
If we were to find it, we're not going to find it. Not to be a pessimist here, but. Well, it was supposed to be in the ark of the covenant for generations to come, not Mount Nebo. So, so there's, there's no promises. I think all those are, all bets are off there. So any, any other questions? Yeah. So here we go. There, great segue. What was the meaning behind the hidden manna? Let's keep reading. There it was to remain until the coming of the Messiah, when Jeremiah would reappear and return the ark and its contents to the new messianic temple in Jerusalem. That's exciting. Charles takes a different view that the reference is to a treasury of manna. And we see this in Psalm 78, verse 25, the bread of angels. That was to descend from heaven during the messianic kingdom to feed the blessed. Since John is never limited by his sources, there's no reason to exclude either as a possible source. In the context of the letter to Pergamum, it alludes to the proper and heavenly food of spiritual Israel in contrast to the unclean food supplied by the Balaamites. So look at that contrast. Hey, we can eat food sacrificed to idols. Oh, no, we can't. But look at what Jesus is offering us, some of the hidden manna. He will sustain us, like going through the wilderness. He will sustain us. We just need to stay faithful. So while the promise is primarily a scatological, is not without immediate application for persecuted people. There are perhaps a dozen or more plausible interpretations of the white stone. Ancient jurors signified innocence by casting a white pebble into an urn. It's a little morbid. There existed a Thracian custom of marking every good day by a white stone. It could have been an amulet or charm to ward off evil. According to popular superstition, mysterious powers were associated with the name of a god. According to rabbinic lore, precious stones fell from heaven with the manna. Reference could be to a stone in the breastplate of the high priest or perhaps to the urim, Exodus, chapter 28, verse 30. In the context of a messianic feast, the hidden, hidden manna, it seems best to take the white stone as a tesserah that served as a token for admission to the banquet. So it's your ticket to the banquet. These little tablets of wood, metal or stone were used in ancient times for many purposes. They were distributed to the poor in Rome by the emperors to ensure a regular supply of corn. Given to the vict, it was also given to the victor at games and to gladiators who had won the admiration of the public and had been allowed to retire from further combat. Anybody thinking of the movie Gladiator? Just checking. The stone awarded to the overcomers at Pergamum was white in that it symbolized the triumph of their faith. Commentators are divided on the identity of the new name. It is normally held to be the name of Christ. By those who interpret the white stone as a magical charm, it is thought that secret knowledge of a god's name, note, known only to him who receives it, gave special power over the deity. Exactly in what sense the name of Christ could be considered secret or new for that matter is not explained. The new name is more likely to be the name of the one who overcomes. No one else can know the transforming experience of fidelity and trial and the joy of entrance to the great marriage supper of the Lamb. The overcomer's name is new, kainos, in quality. It is appropriate to the new age. So that was from Mounts. So any questions to that? So just an idea on the white stone, whether that was a token to submit, to get into a banquet, to actually have access to that manna, right? So it was given because of faithfulness to Christ. And that gave access to the hidden manna. So by refusing to eat meat sacrificed to idols, by refusing to participate in the sexual immorality, by staying faithful, they were given this white stone and that was giving them access to the hidden manna. That's a possibility. The other is that they have this stone and it's basically admittance into the new age, the age to come.
And you said that was written by who?
Uh, Mounts.
Can I hear it again?
Mounts. M-O-U-N-C-E. Uh, he is the author of the New International Commentary on the New Testament on, for Revelation. So yes, another question. Yeah. Absolutely. Many times throughout the Old Testament, God is changing people's names, right? Jesus kind of flexes this too, uh, in the gospels. Yep, absolutely. That could be another option, absolutely. Yep. Any other questions? All right. So that wraps up Pergamum. Please, if you have any questions or if you think of something throughout the week, bring it next week. We can start off that way. But if not, we will pick up with Thyatira. Also, I'm hoping to do a little excursus on the figure of Satan. Boy, that got real deep, didn't it? All right. Thank you, guys. Have a great week. See you next Sunday.